Before we begin, I want to announce that we have an effective session prior to the meeting to discuss litigation related to SNK as well as some personnel issues. As a matter of fact, we're going to the approval of the minutes from the meeting on August 12th, 2019.
I'll make a motion to approve August 12th for 92 minutes.
I second it.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. And move on to the reports. For some of the police.
Good evening. For the month of August 2019, the Police Department officers documented 969 incidents in the Police Department call recording system. I was able to identify 648 of those entries as incidents where someone was specifically requesting the services of the Police Department alone. During the month, the officers issued 183 traffic citations. They investigated 29 traffic crashes and arrested 21 individuals. Additionally, for the month of August, the department members conducted two litter carrier details at the weigh station off of the 100. And during that time, they resulted in 790 trucks being delayed, six of which were found to be overweight. They conducted eight federal litter carrier inspections and they performed an additional 25 inspections throughout the month as well, as they're trying to continue to get their inspections done for their certifications. Those resulted in four trucks and two drivers being placed out of service. Year-to-date, the officers have laid 6,478 federal litter carrier vehicles, finding 43 of them to be overweight. To date, we've put 20 trucks and seven of their drivers out of service. And to date, the officers have issued 1,380 traffic citations, 319 written warnings, and we arrested 128 individuals.
Thank you. Judges report.
For the month of August, in July, we have collected just over 77% of our budget revenue and spent just over 70% of our budgetary expenditure.
And color bar.
For the month of August, the daily average flow to the downtown tree unit plant was about 1.4 million gallons per day. The township received about 2.25 inches of rain, which is the first time in, gosh, maybe a year now that we've been under what's normal for this time of the month. So, the township's still about 14 and 1/2 inches above average for the year, but hopefully that helps with some of the stormwater issues that we've been seeing. The Peloparres Department did perform some nighttime sanitary flow inspections, and this was to look for areas where stormwater may be getting into our sewer system. They performed a good deal of catch basin repair, as well as repairing some block around catch basins to dislure it from the stormwater. The department also oiled and shipped portions of Lidle Station Road and Downpour Road, as well as performing maintenance to try and getting accessory rocks out of the waste that are no longer on the road. And the department performed 138 81 calls as well as daily station checks and perimeter checks and routine field checks.
Thank you. Fire marshal.
Yes, for the month, I responded to 14 fire calls, had one open burning complaint, had one fire investigation, and continue to review the plans of commercial building projects and inspect those under construction. And also, as the school year's starting, we are scheduling fire prevention programs at all schools.
Great, thank you. For the fire company.
Fire company for the month, there were 29 responses in Euclid, eight in Upper Euclid, five in West Euclid, and four other townships, so a total of 46 for the month of August.
And finally, the Euclid events.
Euclid events. For the month of August, we had 329 calls, 89 wish-for-grading township of Euclid. Year-to-date, we are at 2,572.
Thank you. Make a motion to approve the reports.
I'll make a motion to accept the reports as presented.
I second that.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? All in favor? Oh yeah, just, back again, remind me, just to let you know that we are recording the meeting, and the meetings from our camera in the back of the room will be posted on YouTube within a few days of the end of the meeting. All right, Curtis Miller from U.S. Representative Chrissy Wuluhan's office has asked for five minutes.
Thank you for having me, everyone. My name is Curtis Miller, I'm a constituent advocate for Representative Chrissy Wuluhan, so I'm in the Westchester office. And Chrissy just wants to go over to the whole township, borough, and city council meetings in the district to introduce herself and her staff, and offer the resources that her offices provide. I see on the agenda it says a legislative update, so in the district, we don't do so much legislative work. If you do want to know about the legislation that Chrissy is pushing, I was only able to bring one because the last township meeting wanted quite a few, but this has all of our contact information on it, and you can inquire about the legislation that we're working on. So, Chrissy has opened two district offices in the sixth district, one in Redding and one in Westchester, the sixth district after re-districting in all of Chester County and the southern portion of Berks Counties. So, in those district offices, we have currently five, if not to be six, constituent advocates and a district director who work on arranging issues ranging from USAAS and State Department cases, which I work, as well as Medicare cases. We have a constituent advocate who handles Social Security, another one who handles IRS, helping people get access to their tax returns that may be found up in the system. And through all of this casework, we've helped constituents gain access to over $800,000 of money that was theirs, but that was kind of built up in government systems, whether that was getting access to VA benefits that they were having issues with, or Medicare disability insurance, or your IRS act card. So, we've helped constituents do all of that through Chrissy's network, the contacts at the executive agencies. In addition to all of our casework, we are able to write support letters for grant applications, so if anything, if you have a type 2 that you're considering for development, we're able to help you with that. Through that, we have had some success in helping constituents bring $2.9 million into the district for research and development through these grant support letters. Yeah, so we're just, Chrissy really wants to make sure that all the work she's doing in DC is driven from the district and from what the district wants and needs. So, does anyone have any questions for me? Well, again, I'm sorry they didn't have one, but they really wanted, a lot of people wanted these, so I will leave this. Anyone? Sure. So, this is all recorded information, again, I'll call this. For all three of our offices, DC would be your best bet if you want to talk about legislation, because that's where they're doing the legislation. But if you need help with a federal agency, we're here to help, and that would be our Westchester or our Redding office. So, I'll leave this here, and thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
We'll leave it there, if we take a picture. Thank you. All right, next, we're here from Muriel Kennedy from the Family Counseling Center.
Thank you. Introduction as well. I was here last month, as you know, with DARC, and through my work, I've been on the department record for 35 years approximately, and through my work with Doug Hanley, I met Muriel and became part of the senior center. So, we are reaching out to the different boroughs and townships of the service to make sure that they know we are here, to reintroduce ourselves, and so I'll introduce Muriel Kennedy, our executive director.
Welcome.
Thank you. Yes, thanks for the opportunity. We always believe that we have to go out and help in about our existence, because senior centers is not something everybody thinks about all the time. However, they're as important as preschool and schools and libraries. And what we do is, we service 15 townships in addition to the borough of Downingtown, and we try to reach out and build the townships once a year at least. We have basically three areas we cover. One is nutrition, one is activities and programs, classes, and the third one is information assistance. So, we provide a warm lunch every day for the adults and seniors. And the breakfast as well, the lunch is very, very tolerant, supported by the Department of Aging, we actually have a contract program, it's actually funded by the Department of Aging. For that, we have to provide a warm lunch, because many seniors don't hope for this anymore. We provide class classes that includes also dance classes, which are Tai Chi, yoga, and various, and there's exercises, practices, and all sorts of classes that are tailored to adults. And the third category is information assistance, I made it clear, we have a specialist on board who meets, on a Monday basis, with seniors, handling all the different programs that are out there. Because, say, the majority of our clients, those people are seniors, who need some help. They don't have children who support them and lead them through these paperwork and so forth. So, it's a very important function that we take very seriously. Another very important aspect of the senior center is the opportunity for volunteering. We provide volunteer opportunity for our seniors, for anybody, for the, we have volunteers on a regular basis, from schools, from corporations, from companies, and we have in various areas. So, that is something that we, which we are asking for at the end, that we cooperate with us, that we can make on the website and the link, and so we always want people to find us and to volunteer, and very important. Without volunteers, we would not be in this at all. So, the majority of volunteers, very small as that, and volunteers. And what I would like to say is, at the end, that I want to talk about, the reason why townships are so crucial, and we need to address the townships, is because, well, we need to help them, is because, for example, in Euclid, we have 110 people from the local townships. So, these are citizens, and the township is taking care of churches and temples, and kids, and people with disabilities, and all sorts of aspects of the community. The seniors are there, and there will be more, and we all have parents and grandparents, and we cannot forget that. And if every township is just a little bit, then we can go very far, and keeping up the service and everything.
If I can move on to the next item, which is authorization to advertise snowmobile bids.
So, last month, we asked for permission to re-advertise for the snow bid. We did place this ad in the Daily Local on August 21st and then August 28th, with a bid opening date of September 6th. However, we have no bids received, so we are asking permission to re-advertise.
I'll make a motion to authorize a bid to advertise snowmobile.
I'll second. All, any comments or questions? All in favor? Move it on to the Market Shopping Center request for a plastic car event from 12:00 PM. Oh, I skipped the bonfire, I messed up. Oh, step back. The Downingtown East Bonfire Request for Thursday, October 3rd, 2019.
Yeah, that's an annual event that they have out there, and I guess it's probably been posted for 10 years for that bonfire. And they contact us, and our department oversees the bonfire, and then oversees the, we light it, and then it's done.
Is it the same this year?
Same as every year, so.
Great.
About teenagers in this whole district, and it's a really fun event, leads up to the big east-west game. In transparency, I'm really for east.
I'm marching on east. Do you keep yourself?
I don't think I do. I'll make a motion to approve the Downingtown Bonfire Event.
Okay, I second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we move to the Market Shopping Center Request for Plastic Car Events from 12:00 to 4:00 PM on September 22nd, the rain date of September 29th, on October 20th, the rain date of October 29th, and November 17th, the rain date of November 20th. So, this is an ongoing, this is a recurring event. If you do want to add anything, or just the same as this?
Are you looking to have this on a monthly basis going forward?
Yes.
Even during winter months, or just?
No.
Just for the end of the year?
This start like in November, and then figure out the March.
So, and then next year, you'll have a number of series you're planning?
I'm happy to approve the events as long as there haven't been any complaints from the business centers. I mean, I'm guessing that it draws business to the Market Shopping Center.
Did I get any complaints?
Yeah, I'm just saying that I'm happy to approve the events as long as nobody is complaining about, you know, the events in the.
I had to get any complaints.
And you've talked to the other businesses in the.
Yes, I have, yes. Now you have 26 years, so.
Yeah. So, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the events for the rest of the year for the Market Shopping Center Classic Car Events.
And I'll second. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Move to the Pickering Valley Garden Request for outdoor follow-up, I will mention this place.
Yes, so, every year, we always have to come in and ask for permission to put our plans out for sale in the spring. At the last meeting where we got that approval, apparently they decided we needed to have further permission to put plants out for pumpkins, Christmas trees, that sort of thing, from now through the end of the year. So, that's our purpose for being here. One of the questions I had in the letter was, after being there for two decades, doing this for a few decades, and noticing that one of our competitors allowed to move in and put up a permanent structure, I was wondering what we need to do to facilitate that, facilitate that change.
Well, for now, we can directly respond to your request for the rest of this year. What I'd say is, we've worked with power about what would be required for making this permanent, and go through the back of the room, that's probably not perfect to do that right now in this meeting, but yeah, she knows all the requirements to discuss what we need to be done. Is that okay? Okay?
And then, as far as an end date for this sale?
Christmas.
At Christmas?
Yeah, Christmas trees are pretty much down to that.
Okay, great. That's okay. I mean, there's 12 days of Christmas. I will make a motion to approve the request for outdoor fall winter display at Pickering Valley Garden fee for Christmas.
I'll second. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Moving on to the Christian Brothers Automotive Preliminary, at 399 West Euclid Avenue, a preliminary final plan to come out playing submission.
Yes, we received the preliminary final development plan last week, Friday, for the construction of approximately 6,000 square foot automotive building on the corner of Peck Road and 113, on the empty lot, and wherever that is familiar with. Christian Brothers has been through the sketch plan process, they've been through the conditional use process, they've also been to the zoning hearing board for variance. They're requesting permission to proceed as preliminary slash final. Normally, we do get a recommendation from the planning commission for that prior to the submission, however, we did not have a planning commission meeting last week. So, I would say as long as the planning commission does make their recommendation at the October meeting, which would be prior to the next supervisor meeting, there shouldn't be an issue with that. This is really just permission to send out the plans for review.
I'll make a motion to approve the request to proceed as preliminary final for Christian Brothers Automotive contingent on the recommendation from the planning commission.
I second that.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Moving on to the Hiking Group's Request for Extension Land Development Plan on July 20th for the Eagleview Lot 58.
Yes, I received an email from the local manager, September 3rd, requesting an extension of their preliminary final land development plan, which was submitted back in March of 2018. They've been here every three to six months, I think, for this extension since. So, right now, they're asking for the extension until April 15th of 2020, so that they can revise our plans based on comments that they received back in 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for Eagleview Lot 58 for the extension until April 15th, 2020.
I second that.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Moving on to the conditional use decision for the 180 Sherry Boulevard Adult Daycare.
Last month, after the regular supervisors meeting, I was initially used hearing, August 12th, for Workspace Property Trust, who is the owner of 180 Sherry Boulevard. They were looking for conditional use approval to allow for the adult daycare that's currently located at 201 chart lane, to relocate to 6,595 square foot portion of one of their current buildings there. So, they did go through the hearing, presented testimony, we did draft up a few conditions of the approval, that they're subject to all permit applications that are required for building permit, since they're changing the use from a B use group to an I4 use group. There shall be no exterior modifications to the building, including signage, without property owner approval, and any proposed changes must be submitted to the township building official for review. As far as the condition of this application and approval, no outdoor activity space was proposed, and afterwards not approved at this time. The hours of operation are limited from 8:30 to 5:30, and there shall be no more than 60 members in attendance on any day. And they are to comply with all of the planning commission recommendations of approval that were set forth in their August minutes. That's a rough summary of the conditions of the approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use decision for the adult daycare at 180 Sherry Boulevard.
I second that.
Any questions?
Yeah, it's not a Steve, I just represent the applicant, I went across the community and I'm just looking for a clarification of the no-outdoor activity. We're not planning to do any programming in any outdoor space, but some of our members, some of the adults who do it, that they get are smokers, and others just need some fresh air, so what we're planning was to have a smoking area, which is fine in most office buildings, most places. Unfortunately, because of the type of people we deal with, some of them do have some disabilities in terms of cognitive issues, we need to fence that area. So, normally, there'd just be a picnic table, but here, a picnic table is a fencing for the smoking, fresh air. The space that we're thinking about doing is small, it's 10 by 10. We can go further, give you more information about the quality of the air, capyon goes to put in the fence. So, that's the clarification we're seeking, is that certainly, no programming activity outside, but we do love to have a smoking area. My necessity goes to handle the use, needs to be clarified.
Is there any front-?
So, I did receive an email today from Capyonco of Workspace, summarizing what was just said and showing the proposed fence. So, as long as they go through the building permit process for that, and you guys are okay with that, that would be acceptable.
Yeah, I think, after consulting with township staff, that the township not consider that to be outdoor activity, but you do need to comply with condition two, which was, there should be no exterior modifications to the building, including signage, without property owner approval, and any proposed changes must be submitted to the township building zoning official for review.
So, is there any other comments or questions?
Do we want to accept the condition, the conditional assistance?
Oh, didn't I just do that? Oh, no, we didn't vote yet.
Oh, I just wanted to ask, are they allowed to smoke in those buildings?
No, it's not, we're talking about outside seating area where they can smoke. It's permitted at, or not, but it's permitted by the, I mean, some of the staff outside that building now, it's just a matter of the question we have right now, is whether the fence is that way or not.
So, I made a motion. I already did make a motion.
So, and we don't need to amend that for this.
No, that's, it's already in the order.
Okay, all right, so, any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 2019-15, Minimum Municipal Obligations for Pension Plans for 2020.
This is just an annual resolution that says towards the funding for two pension plans for 2020. For the lease pension, the amount is $388,401, and for the non-lease pension, it's $100,500.
I'll make a motion to approve adopt Resolution 2019-15, Minimum Municipal Obligations for Pension Plans for 2020.
I second that.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Resolution 2020-19-2019-16, the Penn Dot Downpour Road Winter Maintenance Resolution.
So, the history behind this particular resolution is the township does maintain a small portion of Downpour Road, which is a Penn Dot Road, just for safety reasons and timing of climate for winters. Normally, we would just sign off on this administratively, but Penn has changed the forms that they're using for this, and are asking for a resolution similar to the P160 form that we passed up the August meeting. Pretty much what this is stating is the board is giving me permission to sign this agreement.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-16, the Penn Dot Downpour Road Winter Maintenance Resolution.
I second that.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? And then, moving to Resolution 2019-17, the Community Day Committee.
So, I mean, for us, we always want to thank the community members and volunteers that work so hard on the Community Day. This year was another amazing success, and we're doing a lot of positive things. The resolution that we're looking at this evening is a resolution that formally reorganizes the Community Day Committee as a formally appointed board, or committee that reports directly to the board supervisors. The resolution itself does lay out certain aspects, similar public meetings such as the board and the planning commission, which includes public meetings, regular public meetings, appointments, and terms, and things of that nature, really just kind of taking the existing committee, which has worked very successfully, and making it a little more organized.
And how is the, can you just clarify how the board was existing previously in terms of appointments and things like that?
The reason I'm looking at this is, technically, the board did not appoint the previous members of the committee, as I understand it. the previous members of the committee, as I understand it. Really, this is just adding a little more flair into the whole process, and hopefully organizing it in a way that's more efficient as well.
So I knew that there's some, I expected there to be some comments or questions. Is there any comments? Yes.
From Heather Melkey, Euclid Township. So I actually have a personal statement I prepared for this, and did not discuss it with any of the existing or previous committee members. So I prepared the statement finding out this afternoon that I was going to be appointed to the new Community Day Committee, and please understand, I'm grateful to be selected and appointed, and to stay on the committee, but I'm extremely disappointed in how the entire situation played out. On Monday, the 19th of August, at 4:15, the previous Community Day Committee received an email with something to the effect of, even though Community Day was successful as usual, as usual, the board was reappointing or appointing new positions, and that you needed to apply and submit a resume, be interviewed, and then a decision would be made as to who would be appointed. So in my, continuing my statement, my husband and I were two of the eight volunteers who attended monthly, sometimes weekly, Community Day meetings, who volunteered countless hours to organize the Community Day event. With all the hard work and the commitment from the committee, I find it hard to believe one of these committee members called this committee dysfunctional. It wasn't said yet, but it was on social media, that our committee was dysfunctional, calling that the board supervisors take control of the committee. We were a subcommittee, a part of the running. I'd like to know where the board supervisors got that information, and did any of the board supervisors attend any of the meetings for the committee? And the answer is no. To have the township manager, at the request of the board, send an email and dismiss committee members just three hours before a scheduled meeting was not only inconsiderate and dysfunctional, but it was downright mean. To be clear, I am blaming the township supervisor for following the directives of the board. Is the board aware that two members of the committee spent hours upon hours going face to face with Euclid businesses, asking for all the donations that were given away at that event? And another question, does anyone know, does the board know of another member who donated all of the materials for the free craft event for the kids? Are the two members who donated the use of their personal popcorn and cotton candy machines and all the supplies, over 600 cotton candy cones and bags of popcorn, given out to residents at no cost to residents or the township? And lastly, to the chair and vice chair, who spent countless hours planning and executing yet another successful Community Day. Those are just a few examples of the hard work that was dismissed by the board. The amount of time that was spent by these volunteers was countless. So yes, I felt as though I was fired from this committee for no valid reason. And then to have our state rep, Daniel Freelotten, comment on social media that our group was quote unquote dysfunctional. All while this current board sat back and watched on social media, even adding comments, stating that we're just doing this to streamline the communication. So I wanted to know also, was that Daniel Freelotten involved in the disbandment of the Community Day Committee? And do you, as the committee, know how many meetings Daniel Freelotten attended for this last event? Answer zero.
So.
Answer zero. I'm still just. So did the board supervisors decide to dismiss the previous members, reorganize, and reappoint new members because one of the members of the committee is running for Euclid Township Supervisor? Why was another email sent to all the previous committee members on Thursday?
Can I, can I interrupt for a second? Because these are not rhetorical questions, you're asking specifically.
No, they are, you're right, they are questions that are presented and have put in two minutes.
Okay, so we now have an opportunity to respond to these questions.
Absolutely.
So we'll take the opportunity to respond to these questions.
Why don't I give you a copy? Why don't I give you a copy, so you can respond as I read?
So, so I'll, I'll, I'll.
Well, why don't we, why, can I have five minutes to finish my statement, and then you can answer your question?
I think I'm going to do, we can go back and forth.
So I'm not allowed to finish my five minutes?
I don't even want the five minutes, you're not going to be able to finish, I'm going to respond to it. I don't want a list of questions, and then, I don't, you know, I'm running this meeting. Okay. So before that's going to become, how, how, how I think it's going to work best, and receiving a list of questions where you could pile up any more questions on me, I'm not going to be able to get all of the answers. And I'd rather, if you have a question, I can respond, if you have a question, I can respond.
Let's go back to the first one.
Yes, please.
Okay, so I'd like to know where the board supervisors got information that our group was dysfunctional.
So I saw that down on station media. I did not have any discussion with Daniel Freelotten about whether, how, how to reorganize, whether to reorganize. My understanding was Daniel was not an active member of the Community Day, as of, at least the end of last year, I'm not sure when she stopped working on the Community Day. I do know that she had stopped being an active member for a while. But no, there was no discussion with her. Where I received information about how the board was, the committee was functioning was mostly through the township staff and township manager, both previous manager, Buck Hamley, and the current manager, Scott Greenley, as well as KB, who has a lot of, actually, KB Churchill, as well as speaking with both current committee members and other people who have worked with the committee in various ways. So it's not something where I'm receiving it from one single person or any of those persons.
So follow up to that, was there a time that you ever contacted anyone, any of the board members contacted anyone on this committee or attended any of the meetings to address the issues you said over and over again?
So generally speaking, I don't attend the, the, the committees for, and there's, there's a back and forth amount whether or not supervisors should attend the township meetings, because it tends to, tends to put a weight, a thumb on the weight when people are delivering, it's the township supervisors. So I do not typically intend to attend the meetings, I do just, I do talk with people.
Okay, so you, the board came to a decision based on what they heard without or at, or actually talking to anyone who sat on the committee, who did all the work?
No, I talked to people who were on the committee who did the work.
Okay.
But I'm not going to say that.
No, I'm not, I'm not asking you anything.
And what they said, they didn't help me.
Okay, but we, we reconstituted because of different reasons, whether, even if you were operating at peak level, we're reconstituting for different reasons. I don't, we didn't mention that meeting's dysfunction, I think you brought that up.
And I'll, I'll say.
Bill just said that he read it on social media, no one, you, you all read it on social media. Now, Bill, the chairman of this board read it on social media and did not question that.
Well, I will say this, that whenever I read it, it was the Republican Facebook page, and while I did comment to, to, to try to clarify what I felt was a misinformation, I, I'm not going to engage in a long conversation on a Republican Facebook page, it's not probably where I'm going to get the fairest interpretation of my comments. So it's not anything against Republicans, I just don't think that's probably the forum that's going to give the message that I'm trying, trying to send, and I think it's easily misinterpreted, what I'm on that.
Fair. Then maybe I'll skip right down to, there were several incidences that occurred, I'm happy to read them, that occurred, and I'll start, I'll read them. So both my husband and I were going to apply for one of the open seats in the Parks and Rec Board, and I was told, this is hearsay, but over, that several committee members, not, they were Euclid committee members, were talking about my husband and I, and said, quote unquote, "We don't want that woman on this committee."
You know, I, I, I would ask that, if you're going to make, if you're something that the board did.
Yes, okay, okay.
But please do that, okay? If you heard someone about committee members, I cannot make any comment, I have no idea who said it, what they said, and why they said that.
I mean, I would say I'm just going to also respect those individuals and not say she or he.
Sure, but I would prefer that you not just hear who said it, but you.
So the most recent one was what I personally witnessed from you, Bill Miller, the chairman, this week, was a quote on Facebook that said, "Wow, you think the Republican Party is the answer? I'm not sure where your head is, but those people are not on your side."
So that has, stop, 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 stop. That has nothing.
No, no, tell me what you, what those people.
That has nothing to do with this committee. That was a, okay, that was a note to Victor Cozen, who is a good friend.
You know, referring to Republicans as quote unquote, "Those people."
You have to, you have to understand, you have to understand that I endorsed, endorsed Kathy Cozen for her in, in the primary, and she lost, and when Victor said, "Vote Republican", I said, "Wow, that's what you're thinking." That was, that was a conversation that absolutely nothing to do with community, either the township or Community Day. So what I'm going to ask you, what I'm going to ask you, I'm going to give you the time, but what I'm going to ask you is that you reserve your comments to specifically what is going on in the township, which you're free to ask, and Community Day, and not everything I've ever written on Facebook.
Sure.
Okay.
Just want to make it quick.
Because if we want to bring up Facebook posts, we can bring up Facebook posts.
So my question, my next question for the board is that an email went out this week asking him, to all the committee members, previous committee members, asking who wanted to remain on the committee, to reply back as soon as possible. And I replied back that my husband and I would both like to stay on the committee, and my husband was not reappointed.
Correct.
So I'd like to know how the supervisors came to a decision as to who they're going to reappoint?
So my, my standard is this, so it, for the people who represent Community Day have to represent the community, all right? So there's a certain inclusiveness you need to have. You cannot have social media posts that allow me.
Other people can, but you can't.
Oh, listen, you're asking what my standards are for accepting Community Day members. And this is, I will check, if, if someone replies to any committee, I will check your social media posts. If your social media posts are full of memes and shared posts that comment on how certain religious groups should be removed from America, or who are enemies of the state, who have memes that have violent imagery, that are talking about hanging politicians in front of the White House, I do not think that they, people, I, I owe me to finish. I do not think a person like that represents the values that we want to see in Community Day. And so when that, when I saw those posts, which I saw, one of the reasons for reorganizing is when I saw those posts, the chair of the previous committee did not seem to care enough to remove that person from the board, and when I had the opportunity to reappoint, I chose not to reappoint that, that person, their husband.
Without having a discussion?
I don't, I don't owe him that.
Okay.
Okay? I don't owe him, if he's going to sit there and, and have posts like that, that tells me enough about a person. I don't need to have a conversation, what could he possibly tell me that would change my opinion?
That it's okay for you to make posts about people, but my husband can't.
He can make posts about broad groups of millions of, of religious groups now, not, not a representative of the Euclid township that I'm on the board now. I'm very comfortable with that.
But you've made those broad strokes about Republicans on multiple occasions. I, I'm, I'm, thank you. You, you've answered, you've answered.
So, I mean, I think, listen, I can, I can show you the post right now, and we can talk about whether that is equivalent to saying, you know.
You've already shared them with enough people, they've seen them, so.
I do think it was, when they, they make public posts on, on public forums, we should be responsible for those posts.
I agree, you should too.
All right, okay. Do you have other questions? Because I can continue to answer your questions.
No, you've answered all the questions, I wanted those, my.
Would you appoint someone like that to your board?
I would talk to someone before I would make this.
So someone that's declaring a, a, a legislature.
You are, you are saying he declared that he did not. My husband shared a post from someone else that described something about a United States Congresswoman who called our president "not human", and that he hates, that she hates our president, he said she is from another country, who we knew did something against our own country.
Do you want me to bring up the other posts?
There was another post that compared Democrats to the Good Spalv.
How about the other posts?
The other post that said that if we aren't careful, that we could have another civil war in this country.
And that you would hang out politicians and put it on the top.
No, that's not what he said. He, he shared somebody else's post.
These are just not posts that I'm going to have representing the township, and so if you, if you can justify them, that's your job, I'm, my job is.
Are you friends with them?
Free to speak, Bill.
I'm not, you are.
You're denying free to speak.
No, we're not, you are free to speak, I'm not.
You're, you're denying my, all right, your speech.
You're not recognized by the board, but I, if you raise your hand in the next, I can give you a speech, I can give you, not give you the speech. I am going to speak right now, I need a second. I am not denying anyone free to speak, what I'm denying you is a position on the board. You can say whatever you want, and no one has stopped you, but you have to take, you have to take responsibility for this. I am not required to then say, well, I'm going to ignore everything you say and give you a position on the board. You want to say anything you want, and then say, I have no, no responsibilities for the, for my actions, and then people should give me whatever I want. That's not freedom of speech. Freedom of speech is just that you can say some dumb stuff on Facebook. I think, congratulations, you did it. Mr. Beck.
I know a little bit about Community Day, and I, and Harry certainly knows this as well. I was involved in starting Community Day, probably, whenever, first year, approximately 25, 23, 24 years ago. The whole concept was to have a non-political, we had an awful lot of little league games going on at Landville Park. And we felt that it doesn't always have to be a baseball game, in my case, playing baseball big time at that point, but it could be a town fair. And we chose to do this in a way that was non-political in any way. We wanted fireworks, we wanted food for people, we had free balloons, you know, whatever it was, but politics wasn't allowed.
And thank you for starting, yeah.
Thank you. And it was a lot of fun, and I'm excited to be included going forward, but it was done with that intent, no politics. We didn't want candidates going handing out things. I threw Democrats out, but I allowed them to stay for the event, but I just didn't want them handing out voter registration this, voter registration that. And so, you know, that was the concern, we do a lot of churches. I've been growing Catholic for 62 years, and I've got a lot of, you know, Catholic columns and all that, we didn't want one church coming over another church. We kept it neutral, and that's what the day was designed to be, just a fun, family day.
I want to say that we're not selecting any of the board members based on political affiliation.
No, no, I just, I was saying, you know, it wasn't designed for the, that kind of mindset, so, I should say designed, it's not what we set out to do when we first started Community Day.
So, thank you. You know, and going back to some of the issues, you know, with the notification of the board, you know, it was commented on that we, we submitted this email, let me, let me finish it, I'll, certainly I'll allow you to, allow you to speak. I certainly would not have chosen to send out an email a couple hours before a meeting. However, we were not informed, the township staff and the board supervisors did not have a list of meetings, and were not aware that the meeting was occurring at that time.
Hi, my name is Karen O'Malley. I've been on the committee for four years. I want to say personally, you know, we have not brought politics into the group. Maybe some members themselves might have had discussions back and forth, but being part of the committee has never been a obligation to be on it. However, that being said, if I know somebody who has made, who's an attiator, who has made hateful remarks, general, that makes me uncomfortable as a person. I know I've served, hearing these kinds of things, it's very upsetting to me, thinking made personally be attacked. I want to be comfortable with who I'm serving with, and I don't mind people that I want to be comfortable. You know, we have disagreements with each other, but they're good-hearted, like, trying to actually keep it fair, you know? We have people who bring up old things, but their point is trying to keep everything fair, keeping, you know, all businesses fair, everything's going on, everybody's very representative, that all groups are there, you know, in our community tent, and just saying something like that, I mean, yeah, it could be better organized, and that is all right, the way it went out. I would necessarily agree with the way, I think they should come, it's happened back in the past, we had any requests, and it's like been down the line, carried that line as to, did the board supervisors get our requests, then three months later, we get the answer back, "No"? Well, why? Down the line, "Yes", six months later, "Well, we can't, we didn't get an answer". So having a representative would be a good thing, it, because we have issues, things we want to add, and whether it's beneficial or not, but that's saying, and I wouldn't feel uncomfortable with somebody who mainly made hateful types of posts, so.
So I do want to say, I do want to separate two issues, because I think, you know, there's the issue of how the board was notified, and the issue of whether the organization should have happened. And, you know, obviously, I, I think the board, the committee, what we told, you know, we tried, we tried to tell you the way we thought was respectful, you know, in retrospect, we've looked at, looked at how we communicated, and certainly, the message was not received appropriately, so that means that we need to send it correctly. And that's something we're going to need to improve on, and I do apologize, if you felt, I know other members felt that way, and I do apologize for that. But that said, I think I am completely comfortable that the board needed to be reorganized, so that we would have a communication flow, talk with our manager, Scott Greenley, about how the communication flow has happened, and how, as you mentioned, things back and forth were flowing well, and we want to improve that, we want to get that better, and this is how we think we need to do that. So I. So I think it's really, we think that this will help streamline it. It was not our intention, and in the email, we never said everyone was fired, I understand, or that we were eliminating all these positions, I understand. In retrospect, that would have been interpreted, but that was not the intention, and we don't intend, you know, don't intend to replace everyone who loses purpose. I mean, thank you for everything that all of you have done, so, yes.
I have much to add, I'm on the committee, but I have a few questions that I have, some questions that came up. What was the decision made to reorganize this?
This was a discussion, I had discussions with the township manager, the assistant manager, township staff that deals with Community Day. I have, not just talked about Community Day, obviously, in fact, it's a small part of the board, but I've had conversations with them all the time, they have conversations with the other board members, and so the ideas, you know, go to Scott and previously it was Doug, and they come up with a recommendation, and then...
Did your two other governing parties talk with you?
I didn't hear the question.
Did Ms. Dome and Ms. Bob make that speech?
We're not going to do a cross-examination.
I suppose. What I want to know is what...
I know what I want to know, okay?
This is the medium that's being discussed at.
What was the decision made to send out an email?
I made that decision with Scott in his office. I did, alone.
You made that decision alone?
To send out that email. Scott had talked about this issue with the other supervisors, that's how it started. And I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You need to, I am respecting you and not interrupting you at all, and you need to respect me and not interrupt me. I am answering a question you asked, and as well as I can, okay? It's taking too long, I apologize. Listen, the way it works in a situation with a three-member board where we have the Ball of Sunshine Act, is that when I have a conversation with Scott, Scott might have a conversation with Ken, or might have a conversation with Mrs. Randle, and then he comes back with a recommendation, and that's how we do it, okay? I know what you're trying to drive at, you're trying to see whether we violate the Act, or we do not.
Well, I'm sorry, I already know, Mr. It was Paul Moongha for the board, I'm going to hear what these other two...
I'm already here, listen, this is not your...
This is not a deposition. This is not a deposition.
It's a question for the citizens who is concerned on how this government...
This is public comment, you want to make a comment, you can make a comment.
There's a comment, maybe you just said no.
Listen, unfortunately, the way it works, they vote for me to be chair, so I do get to organize the conversation. I understand that they will have an opportunity to speak when I'm done, but I'm taking my prerogative to speak first, and then they can add later, but I'm not going to give up my prerogative simply because you're trying to catch one of us in violation of an ethics law, which we do not violate, well, whatever it is. Whatever, not legal, but it's of an act. So, I understand what you're trying to say, but if you have a specific question about why would this be then applied, how we did it is completely not wrong. All right.
If there's no more questions, others have questions.
So...
Please say, say your name.
I'm sorry, I'm Karen Winter. So back to the resolution 201917 on Community Day. What is that, you're saying, are you changing the Community Day, meaning for me to be a subcommittee?
Yes, it's now directly appointed by the board in our league.
There was no original committee of parts to start it?
It wasn't really working that way as it was, it's long since stopped being a subcommittee. The members were no longer all members of the parts of our committee, and so it wasn't really functioning as a subcommittee. It was unclear, that's why I was asking Scott how it was organized, just to try to get that information out, it wasn't really functioning that way. And, you know, I don't know how many members of the parts of our board are actually on Community Day, I need to find this.
One.
One, two.
So then...
Well, I have...
So then they actually went through parts and recreation to the...
Now, my understanding, when I talked with people who were part of Community Day for a long time, like the way it was, was that it was, it started, actually, you would know.
Benny Rans and I were in the beginning, Nancy Toner was also involved, and then we had Danielle, and Joanne, and then Harry on. So through the years, I was the longest candidate of that, Harry was on for a number of years, and Nancy was on for probably four, five?
Five, five.
So, yeah. And so we're the party members, of which I'm still on that committee, we're a part of that, so.
And so we wanted to be able to make sure, so for instance, Harry resigned this year, there was a Bible setup on who, how they picked her as chair, or who organizes. So it was kind of, well, in reality, what this does is make this committee like, it's not something special here, this committee is now like all of our other boards in terms of reporting to the board's supervisors. This was the outlier, it wasn't like there was all other different ways to do it, we had one way to do it, and then there was the Community Day, and we decided that this, it would work better, we think it would work better, given some of the issues that we had in communication. You know, the day works out fine in the end, but getting there, and I think the staff would agree, that getting there can be a struggle, and we thought maybe we could streamline that and make it more enjoyable, and less onerous on both the volunteers and the staff, which is, it is not an insignificant thing. We are, the township is a big stakeholder in this, the Community Day makes, raises a lot of money, but the township also puts in a lot of money, we pay for the firearms, but we also have to pay our extra police time and a half, we have to pay our public workspeople time and a half, to spend the day there as needed, and as well as the numerous hours that the management staff has to do to help set up the day. And I'm not complaining about that, but it makes us pretty significant stakeholders in the day, so we want to make sure that this is as efficient as possible.
Okay, so, it's not like a subcommittee, it's a committee?
It's a committee, yes.
Hi, my name is Matthew Mendez. I've been on the committee for four years now, and thank you again for letting me contribute to that service. I do have a few comments on the actual write-up of the bill. Under Article 4, it says, "Members of the committee should be appointed annually by the board supervisor, at a regularly scheduled meeting involving an annual community day." Could we put it in language that says this will be done in August through July, since the event is in July, as opposed to appointing next year in September? I feel like a month has been wasted for that. I know that this is a reformation, this is an outlier, but I'd like to go continue year after year, appointing in August and in July, as opposed to September and August.
I don't know if it needs to be in there, I think you can do it in August without it being in there, but if the board wants to be in August, I think not having it in there gives you more flexibility, maybe July turns out to be better. I mean, as long as it's annually...
That was something that we tried to work out logistically with this resolution, trying to figure out how the appointments would work annually. Obviously, it's not December, January, December.
Right, it's not a calendar, right.
So, that's not what it's working, we don't want a black on, we know that you guys start about very early, immediately after the first, or the kind of meetings, and so, we don't want any like...
Yeah, so the next regularly scheduled meeting would be in August, or possibly even July, if our meeting is after Labor Day, or, you know, Community Day.
The other items are... A bit of nine, it spells out specific duties of the committee. I think a few of them are missing. I'll try to go slowly. There's no mention of the community tent, which has been an area that we have staff to make sure that they're representatives there. We have infrastructure people, we have social media engagement, we have a Facebook page, we do have a website that's on the supervises, we need people to be in those and be able to post. We'd like to expand into Twitter, Snapchat, there's social media that's been worked out. Also, we have a lot of people who go out to community members for door prizes, giveaways, we have an annual raffle, I think some of these issues spelled out in the actual...
So, that's why we did the catch-all, okay?
Yeah, I think there's so many other things that are catch-all, such as making sure the water truck's in the right spot, we need sure that someone's there to make sure the tents are put up in the right spot, making sure someone secures the L.A.A., so we can make sure that we have access to that, someone can turn on the water, someone can make sure that all the supplies are moved out of the barn. There are a lot of things that are in that catch-all that I think need to be spelled out, or I think these other things are vital parts of the community that need to be spelled out.
So here's my suggestion, Karen, which is, and it's good suggestions, my thought is, rather than try and do it on the fly, ad hoc, you'll obviously have some good thoughts, other folks may have some good thoughts, is approve this as is with the catch-all, appoint the committee, and then we can always come back with an amendment to add things to it that, so it'll be in here and codified in here, but we won't hold up, and we won't also be doing something on the fly and then realize, ooh, you know, wake up in the middle of the night, like I always do, and say, oh, God wrote that.
Because I think we have that average, like we can't simply change and approve it tonight, right? We have the average.
No, no.
Because this is a resolution, it's intentional.
You can do it, but I think it probably makes sense.
As long as that's an easy process, I just want to make sure that as we can, the committee over year after year, that organizational ethologies have lost to transitions, and I think have been, and make sure that...
Yeah, I think that's a good point. And what I agree with Mr. Green, I think that maybe we can come back and, after having some input from the board, as the committee as a whole, maybe we can make sure we have all these things in place.
John Gansky, 116, and two. I want to thank you guys for coming up with a solution that's helpful to everybody, and it's a shame it's got to be a political link. And one other thing too, all these people, everybody's been commenting about it, we put up a sign sheet, thousands of people went through that area, we got one name to sign up. It seems like a lot of people, like a couple in the band were asking that, whatever, and then when they come down and say, hey, you know, it'd be easier, oh, you know, they know they can do it, and I'll be a cheerleader.
We agree, and I think what we've shown is that we want participation from the community, and so people can apply online also, and I think, and we've announced it, and so I think we're bringing in new people, and you can assign them some new tasks.
The last thing I wanted to add was, as organized or disorganized as we were over the years, if it weren't for Sue Bernhardt, Katie Churchill, or Doug Hanley, or the police, and the ambulance, and the fire department, which make up a big part of this community, it didn't get done. And especially Sue. We're going to get her to...
Okay, I don't think it's bad action, I'm a five bucks, you know what I mean?
And I just want, I mean, a lot of the volunteers who have organized it over the years are here today too, so we definitely, I mean, value everyone's time, and it's a lot of time that goes into making this event happen, and it's, you know, so many residents come up to us telling us it's their favorite event of the year. It's a really important day for neighbors to talk with neighbors, and form relationships, and strengthen our bond as a community, so we appreciate it, so, thank you. Thank the volunteers.
Is there any other comments or questions about the resolution? I'll make a motion to approve the resolution 2019-17, the Community Day Committee.
I second that.
Any final comments or questions before we go? All in favor? All right, moving on to the appointments to the Community Day Committee. So we did receive, we had initially, I'm going to just comment, we had initially thought to try to keep the Community Day voting members at seven members. We got quite a few new applicants, and we tried to expand the number of seats to add in at first. There was a limit to what we thought was a manageable number, so while we couldn't take everyone, we do appreciate everyone who applied, and new members who applied, and also the returning members who reapplied, but we could not unfortunately take everyone. So we decided to try to keep it as a manageable number, was to have nine voting members, and two ex officio non-voting members. Not entirely arbitrarily, but at least the returning members, we tried to, I'm going to propose a list that includes all the returning members that we do accept it to be voting members, and then it was more or less arbitrary, but some of the new members would be ex officio, but it's not meant as a slight, it's just we had to keep, we had to put in a number of names. So with that, I'm going to propose the appointments of Matt Landis, Joanne Gansky, Bill Fagan, Tim Grant, John Gansky, Heather Dumey, Cara Mona, Barbara Phillips, and Gretchen Grant as voting members for Community Day, and Jason Oliver and Steve Prince as ex officio members.
I'll make a motion to...
I thought you were just reading the list.
I want to just second what Bill said, thanking everyone for applying to work on this important committee, so I'll second the motion of all the appointees, as Bill did.
To clarify one thing quickly, we consolidated this list by sending our thoughts to Mr. Green, who produced what he thought was a consolidate, common list. Is there any comments or questions? Motion, and second, all there?
Hi.
Thank you. So, we'll move now to the cynical updates. Find my update. So, it's a short list, but it's some new activities or updated activities. As of September 9th, which is today, the activities are at the drill site, Drill Site Number 310, which is the one at Herman West Drive, it's about 30, 31% complete, with the ring process to Upper Uppen. They're planning for a pullback in mid to late October. Drill Site 320, which is the U.L. Boulevard at Worton Boulevard, the drill site is being set up to work this week to begin pilot hole from Morton Boulevard to Herman West. This is expected to take about 46 days complete, it's 2,403 feet. The Drill Site 316, which is the one at Showen Road in the West Whiteland, up through to Devon Drive and Uppen, is still awaiting PBC approval, so no activities, no drilling activities are happening there. And then, there's currently no activities planned, other than the basic right-of-way maintenance between Whitford and Devon Drive sites. So that's the cynical update we have for now. Any comments or questions on Sunoco? Yes?
Alex Newpen, Monetry Glendale. Earlier this year, there were two noise entrances that were voted for by Sunoco, or the two, or something like that. What was the reported vote of the waivers?
So I made a motion to bring it to a vote, it was never seconded, so there was no vote.
So there was no action taken the two times Sunoco came in?
No action taken, and they moved forward. The first time, we gave you a little more detail, they came twice, right? So the first time, we said we needed more information, and they, rather than give us all the information that we could have satisfied us, decided to move forward.
Yes, but the board never took a vote?
We never took a vote. No, we never took a vote to specifically what you had to...
Thank you.
I don't know that that's 100%, actually, it's not, they would take a vote to reject, it would be a vote, it would be a motion of second, and if you got a second, you vote on the motion.
Yes.
They never got the second, so there was no motion to vote.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Oh, no.
So, we're clear that, so no vote taken, so if it states that I voted against something, we don't...
Yes, well, let me, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand what you're getting at. What is it, you explain to me what, I'm trying to understand, what you said.
There were no votes.
There was, how can you, how can you can't vote yes or no unless you have a second on a motion to vote yes? And there was no second on a motion to vote yes, so there was no opportunity to vote no?
So let me...
Yeah, if you said you voted no, that's incorrect.
We need to move it forward.
They didn't say they voted no, I think that was just made clear. There was never, hold on a second. There was never, hold on a second. I'm trying not to be shocked by what's going on here, but. So let me just repeat, you get a motion. I'll try to explain the motion process, maybe you don't understand it fully. You have a motion, there was a motion, Sanoco wanted a motion to approve their drilling, right? To approve it? There was no motion to approve, there was never a seconded motion to approve. So no one could vote yes, and therefore no one could vote no?
Okay.
Got it? Got it? Okay, good.
But our refusal to move it forward.
No, I think it speaks for itself, it's, it's, it's so.
Any other questions, Dr. Taylor? Time to move on to the announcements. September 12th, Historic Commission will meet at the Caddo Wilderhouse at 7:00 PM. September 16th, Parks and Rec Committee meets at 7:30 PM here. September 18th, the Zoom Hearing Board will meet to discuss 616 Northwood Grove, Christian Brothers', and Decision for 529 West Euipin. It's also scheduled for the.
What's your time set?
7:00.
At 7:00. The September 18th, the Environmental Advisory Council meets at 6:30 PM.
Yeah, that's a missed break.
Everyone has the 18th.
Yeah, that's.
It's also the 18th, I think on the agenda that you have that says the 19th. It should be, it should be corrected to September 18th for the EAC, 6:30.
Now, if I can, I'm sorry, I'm still thinking about this, I'm trying to understand this man. I think I would add to the question that by, if there's a motion for a yes, and it's not approved, I think that's essentially a vote against.
Okay, with that, we'll go to October 2nd, the Patent Commission meets at 7:30 PM here. October 10th, Historic Commission meets at the Caddo Wilderhouse at 7:30 PM, and the next board supervisors is here, October 15th at 7:30 PM. But, yeah, that is Tuesday because of the global.
Oh, so, oh, I'm sorry. I was going to say, we need to put in and announce the dates for the newly formed Community Day. Oh, they have to.
But we do have another meeting this month, it's Thursday, September 19th. It's not on this list, it's the Comprehensive Plant Update Committee meeting. Those are open to the public, we talk about the 10-year vision for township over the next 10 years, so come if you're able, it's at 3:00 on Thursday.
And Chris Leder, Simon.
Hi, thank you. The next committee, the next month, the newly formed committee has to have a meeting, but we are not aware of all the members, some of the names you read out on that. So how do we meet without violating the sunshine law? Pick a date.
Work this.
We'll organize a press meeting so that we can everything set, and then we'll report.
Yes. Yeah, now we're going to move to the open public town meeting.
My name's Michelle Strayhorn, I came to the Township Building on August 21st and gave you this letter and signatures, and here are those more signatures for my residents. We had a traffic issue that everybody had to deal with. Some had small kids, and I was reading what I wrote to you. I don't know if you guided it, the state stamp, but you should have guided it, you know. There you go, Township Supervisors, I had a pickering point development off of Euipin Avenue directly across from the Milky Way Farm. Traffic has always been an issue returning in and out of our development for the residents. Since our township has grown, it is now definitely an accident waiting to happen, especially having to not just look at that in right, but also the turns from the farm and the strip mall as to the develop, the dilemma. When weather conditions are difficult, it is not easy to make a turn safely. Please look into this problem to prevent an accident from occurring. Have you all looked at this, did you get my letter, I like to know the status, and all those people here were concerned citizens too.
I love seeing that.
We did receive that letter, and I did talk about it with the police department, we looked at issues that happened in that particular section, and we're pressed, I think, to find any true issues. But it's something that has been made of monitor, and we understand that there were many signatures on that. So it's a very interesting question.
Well, something needs to be done, I mean, we talked as residents, and we're thinking if you could at least get the Milky Way Farm exit to only turn right on Euipin Avenue, and that exit there in front of Lemoncello, to turn right, it would be easier than having to look four different ways to pull out of there before somebody gets killed. And I'm hoping it doesn't take someone to get killed for you to do something. I would like to be updated on this, please.
We will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, a big question.
On Community Day, could they stop a subcommittee acquired in that? We're checking.
I'm following you up on this, so.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I've been away for a couple of months, but a few months ago I asked about a task force, and this lady was bringing up industry again, about traffic and the whole thing in Euipin Township. You know where I stand on this. Are you, will you consider putting a task force together to look at the traffic situation in this township? You could have members of the first responders, that, you know, we need, we need to find out from them what's available, what is allowed, police, community members, and address this issue. Now, that's the first thing, to look and see, is it an issue? Now, my perception is, it's a big issue, but I think you put some people together to identify exactly what the issues are, and then look at what are the solutions? And then decide whether the district, the township, will investigate it and do something about it. Every meeting that I've been at, every meeting for 35 years, traffic has been brought up one way or the other. And being aware of it and monitoring it is not going to do it. It's not a police issue, we have an outstanding police department. You would need twice the faculty, staff, sorry, faculty, I'm going back to my principal name, twice the staff to do something about it, and they can't do it.
Right, but I think here's, here's what else I did. I heard your recommendation for a task force, and I understand that. We have looked at, I know you're concerned with Devon Drive.
No, 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 I'm concerned with all of the neighborhoods where they're passing through, speeding through. Go ahead.
We have actually done some work, some successes on what we've identified as high traffic, highly dangerous, whereas 113 being the, Scott, you think, or either Scott. Want to talk about the changes we made to the speed limits on 113, we didn't make it, but we got penned up a committee. We got, so.
Yeah, traffic, I'm just going to say, traffic is always a problem in every community, and we have taken steps over the years, I mean, not just this board, but previous boards. I mean, we're constantly monitoring traffic and putting the safety of our residents first. So it's not like we're not doing anything, it would be a zoo out there if we never did anything.
My question hasn't been answered, will you put a task force together?
We're not currently discussed, we have not currently decided to do a task force.
Okay.
We have.
Thank you, that's all, that's fine, you've answered my question, so.
Well, let me, I'm going to add a little speech beyond that. So, you know, one thing we do with, work with Chief Alexander all the time, with identifying, whenever a neighbor comes, a resident comes in with a complaint about their neighborhood, he evaluates whether that concern is, what that, he collects data to see how serious that concern is. Obviously, we often feel something, right? But when you collect the data, then that can help you decide what's the appropriate path forward. One thing, I'm not going to start a task force where I start off the conversation with, well, I'm going to take all these solutions off the table, police not the option. And that's not what I'm wanting to do in a task force, but I want to, if I were to do it, if I were, right? If we were to set the task force, what would have to be is open, open issue, because in some solution, some areas, some solutions might work, and some solutions might not work.
That's why you would have different members of a task force.
Right, but I, right now, we are, we are comfortable working, and I know it's not the solution you want to hear.
No, 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 I'm not, don't, don't tag me like that.
But, okay, so that wasn't.
No, no, that's not, I came here for the whole community, not one street. You know, my street's a disaster, something's going to seriously happen there, but it's all over this township.
The roads that we've focused on, highest roadways and have, you know.
Cut through.
No, the big roads, 100, 113, where we've had fatal accidents and had most of our accidents, most of our speeding, while small community roads are dangerous, we're actually a lot more problem than, I don't know if you think.
You're comparing highways to residences.
I'm comparing people dying on one road and not on the other.
You're comparing neighborhoods to a highway. Come on.
But we are participating in a regional task force, there is a task force.
Regional nothing, township task force, please.
Well, the fact of the matter is that traffic flows from one municipality to another municipality. Everyone cutting through our neighborhood, I live in the same neighborhood as you, Mr. Slimer, they're, they're not all Euipin residents, they are.
Most of them aren't, going through Devon, they're cutting through.
Exactly.
So do something to discourage them from doing that. Islanders, speed bumps, you don't want to hear, but, you know.
My point is, we are, we are looking into, we are participating in a regional task force.
It's not worth it.
To help look into these problems.
Yeah, it's market quick, market driving. Could you just explain how that works? Because I worked at Phoenixville on the corner of 113 and 401, there was a big problem. You know, when you come to Phoenixville and you want to get on 401, you almost got killed. And for like six months, there was a man that I knew that, I don't know who he was. Anyway, he would count, and he would watch, and he would do all this stuff, traffic stuff. And then he, I guess he turned in all his data, and then there was a turning arrow, which then we fixed the problem. So how does that work? Is that from PANDA, is that from West Pike Lynn, who does that? How does that work? Anybody know? From our.
Yeah, suppose. So, in any municipality, you're going to have roadways that may be township-controlled roadways, while you may have other roadways that are controlled by the state. And there are two very different entities in controlling what happens on those roadways. We have a mix here in Euipin, like you would in any other municipality, we're talking about. Most people associate a state roadway with a road like Route 100, Route 113. But it's also entirely possible for you to be on what appears to be a completely rural, local road that is also a state roadway, Whitford Road being a road just like that. Most people wouldn't necessarily realize that a roadway like that would be a state roadway. So when we're talking about doing studies and determining how we're going to control traffic on those roadways, it comes down to whether that is a roadway that's controlled by us or PANDA. And when we have circumstances where we want to have things addressed on those state roads, then we have to go through the process of engaging PANDA to have their engineers and their folks come out. You're talking about somebody sitting and individually counting cars at an intersection like that. That's a PANDA intersection, that's someone that they would have hired as a subcontractor to come out and do the count. Now, we do things very similar with our traffic studies that we do on our own roadways. We have a traffic study going on right now on a roadway that a resident made a comment about just last month, so that we can collect the data. We did a traffic study on that same roadway almost exactly a year ago. We're doing a second study on that roadway so that we can get comparative data, you know. One of the things that we find a lot is that folks are recognizing volume and the volume of traffic that's coming through, that may not be something that they were used to, you know, moving into a particular area at a time before that. But a lot of times, what we don't find is that the traffic data that we received would ultimately suggest that there should be a significant change to the roadway or the speed limits within the roadway. We look at a lot of things, the times that the cars are traveling, how many cars there are, in what lanes they're traveling, how fast they're going, what is the average mean? What is the 85th percentile? Ultimately, at the end of the day, the speed limits that you're used to seeing anywhere that you're traveling are based on that 85th percentile speed. And a lot of times, we do end up finding that we're not saying that there's no enforcement avenue available for a particular area, but that area doesn't call for wide-ranging changes to do to the roadway. But again, I think we're all seeing volume, and that happens a lot, yes.
May I ask one comment? Is that data you collect, is it publicly available?
Oh, we're happy to share. Happy to share.
Chief, what is the number again going down Devon? Would you say 3,700 a day or a week?
I would have to look back.
Okay, I remember you mentioned, it was a couple of months ago, so I, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, I just remember that number. I don't know if that was for a week or for a day.
So any of the studies that we do, we are collecting that data 24 hours a day, a full seven-day period, so that we can get an entire snapshot of that roadway for an entire week's period of time. And again, we will collect that data, round them up, and get the counts for the roadway, the directionality of the vehicles traveling, how many times a day, the speeds, et cetera. We can see all of that data and really break it down to determine whether or not this is truly an area where we know that we need to make, you know, wide-ranging changes, or whether or not those really don't, aren't suitable for the roadway. We do find that often, while we certainly can continue to do enforcement in those areas, they're not necessarily suggesting that wide-ranging changes should be made. The roadways are often appropriately marked for speed, and the 85th percentile is generally very close to that in many cases. It's not to say all, we certainly have areas in this township where we would say that we have issues with speeding vehicles. I can go and sit on, have officers sit, or sit myself on Concord Avenue, and I want to say we did 67 hours of speed details there relative to the complaints that we were getting. And I think the officers wrote less than 26 citations in 67 hours. And take Eagleview Boulevard, we can sit there for one hour and write over 20 citations for vehicles traveling over 60 miles per hour. I would venture to say that, you know, that that is a significant issue that we're constantly trying to stay on top of. Again, it's not to say that every roadway in this township doesn't have people on it that that will be speeding. What we have to try to do is determine how much of that has occurred, and at what times, and when can we feasibly be there to address that. You know, one of the things that I like to remind folks is that, you know, in addition to the traffic concerns and us addressing them, we are still trying to answer calls for service as well. And, you know, we're doing the best we can to divide up that time to be on all of these roadways that folks have concerns with, and so we're going to continue to do that.
See, that, that is exactly what I am talking about. They're overwhelmed already, and I don't think it should be their responsibility. People get angry at the police stand, oh, I'm getting tickets, it's never their fault. A committee would put together something that would take that, that need off of his shoulders by putting islands, look at the other communities that have done that. Islands in the middle of streets, and then people thinking, oh, I'm going to cut through on my, to get home faster, no, I'll just use 30 or 100 or 113, like I'm supposed to, not go through people's neighborhoods. So that's, I don't, I really, I would not propose that the police go out and give out tickets in all these, because it would just end up, they would be angry at them. And I really think you should consider a task force addressing this issue when it comes up as much as it has, and we've got serious, serious situations here in this township. The second thing, just to bring up, they put that electric timer on Devon, had a tremendous impact on speeders, not volume, but speeders. That thing's always out, it's been out for the last week and a half. So I don't know what, I called the township, and they said, well, someone's on vacation, so that's fine, but maybe we could look at the company that made that? Because it's always out, I live right across from it, and we know, we know when it is out because we can hear the cars screaming down the road. So, thank you, that's all. Please look at a task force. Enough is enough.
Michael Taylor, one man. This town was robbed earlier, it's been all around, and, yes, I am a Republican, you know that. But I was very, very taken back by that comment when you called me those people. I'm not trying to be political. Red dot. I tried to play, I'm racing for the issue. From the beginning, I'm being quick on my quick protest. From the beginning, when you came on board, I'm pointing to that for you. I tried to work with you guys. I think Republicans will work and help with these things. But when you call on social media and call us those people, I would think that, I'm one of your constituents.
I honestly, I find this really disingenuous when you're standing next to a fellow Republican committee member who's calling Democrats much worse than those people, and I have a person. So, the, if you want to do that and turn to your buddy next to you, and ask him, well, what should we call them? So I don't think, I don't, is it, here, before, before you continue, before you continue, does this have anything to do with township business, or is this a personal communication to a friend on Facebook?
Yeah, this is, this is township business. If you're saying that Republicans will not help on the pipeline.
I didn't say, this pose had nothing to do with the pipeline.
The whole article is about the pipeline.
The whole article, the, you know, in any context, I had a whole private conversation with him that had a whole lot of context, and one comment was public. And the comment was about the fact that who he was proposing to vote for. It had nothing to do with who, pipeline, it was, everything, what his, what his message, his ultimate, the ask was from, from the. It had nothing to do with who, with pipeline, it was everything, what his message, his ultimate ask was from the people. And so I, this was a, this was a public conversation that I should never have put it on Facebook, but it had nothing to do with the pipeline, and it had everything to do with who he was, I have another friend, I went for Democrats, but I am not saying that all Republicans are evil, or can never be a good governor, and participate in good governance.
Thank you, guys.
And look, we appointed 23 Republicans to this, you know, we appointed 23 Republicans to the Community Day Committee. There's nothing wrong with it, there's Republicans all working in the township all the time, it has nothing to do with it. This was about something, this was about something personal, okay? And so this had nothing to do with township business and nothing to do with pipelines, in fact, I can't even remember what the article was about. I knew it had something to do with pipelines, but I can't remember what it was.
That was.
But you're just, this is really, it's, like I said, it's totally disingenuous, because you're standing next to a fellow Republican committee member who said much way more horrible things about Democrats, so I can tell this is just a political attack. And so, so continue, but let me just put it in that context.
Well, my question is that, what was the point of doing Add Resolution 217-25?
Is that the one, I don't, I don't think that that's the one Mr. Schroeder passed with Mr..
No, absolutely, which I would, having taken any steps to.
I don't believe, no, because I don't, first of all, it's not binding on the board, I thought it was ridiculous, I thought it was a ridiculous resolution. I was involved with some of the early drafting that resolution, and I weren't completely siding with it as far as I was concerned. And for instance, one of the parts of the resolution which may be rejected out of hand was that it was saying that we should allow 50% more pipeline that are already in the ground. So if you have six in the ground, you're allowing, you say, well, we should get three more. Well, I completely reject the logic of that. So I, just the conceptual basis of that resolution is outrageous. So I don't, I can have done nothing, because I don't think that had a very good basis in reality. So that, I don't think I've, I don't know all the actual, I should have said nothing, because I don't know all the, off the top of my head, every, it was a four or five week resolution, which I don't have in front of me right now. But that was the main reason I did not, that was the major objection I had to that resolution. I was not involved in passing that resolution, it was the previous board, and I don't believe that that was the right path forward.
So you think that there should be tree ordinances when trees are cut down?
They're not allowing the trees back anymore.
They're, they're, no, it's, oh, no.
Excuse me?
I gave you, I gave you the answer, I gave you the answer. Any other comments or questions? All right, please, I'm rushing to adjourn.
I'm moving to adjourn.
All in favor?